Would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Counselor Martinez will lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nita, would you call roll first, please? Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Schlebach?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Schrader?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
A quorum is declared.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, we do have a modification to our agenda this evening. We are adding a special award and presentation under, I lost. Proclamations, communications, and appointments. So, if you'll so note.
Nita? No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Schrader?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Okay, proclamations, communications, and appointments. We have a special award this evening for Rachel. And, I guess, hello.
Hello. So just to give everybody in council kind of a background of how we got here. Earlier, at the end of last year, the Valley Initiative Partners applied for a branding grant with the governor's already economic development office, and we received that grant. Through that branding process, we went through a lot of trainings, a lot of everything to get to a brand and a logo that would truly represent the valley. From there, the VIP string group put out a call for local artists, and we received over 30 different logos. From those four made it to the branding rollout event April 27th, where the community got to vote. And from that, a logo was chosen, and it was created by our very own Rachel Mastin. And she dealt with me, goes like, "Oh, can you edit this?" Like, a million times. And she's awesome, and she totally deserves this certificate of appreciation, sorry. Come here, Rachel. There you go. And here's $25 to John and Dave.
Counsel, unfortunately, Rachel's gonna be leaving us. We're gonna miss her. But she and her husband are gonna go on a mission and do some really good work. So, we wish her well, and we hope the very best for both of these.
Thank you.
And I just also wanted to thank Rachel for the tremendous amount of help that she's given me in the transition. She's been wonderful. She's done a wonderful job. So, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
If any of you have visited our updated website lately, or are following us on Facebook, Rachel is the one pretty much responsible for all of those improvements and better communications. So, you will leave, so we'll miss.
Thank you.
You guys like to take a picture with Rachel? Has everyone seen the brand?
Yeah.
You don't have a picture of it with you?
It's actually on her certificate.
Oh, okay. Well, you share and pass that around. So, yeah, so, the goal is the valley is working towards a unified economic development policy where we promote the San Luis Valley and not our individual communities. And we're trying to get the word out about the valley in general, and promote economic development anywhere in the valley. So Rachel has designed our valley logo. So, it's very special. Come on up. We'd like to get a picture and...
Bring the certificate?
Oh, there she is. Okay, one, two, three. Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Very good job. We have Officer Pino here to present the bicycle safety coloring contest awards.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it fine if I just do it here? Do you prefer it with a microphone? I'm Officer Pino with the modesty police department. I am a community policing officer. And in that detail, we are asked to go and do presentations to the schools. And I was lucky enough to get together with the kindergarten class this year at Marsh Elementary. And what we did is we walked through some of the bicycle safety requirements that they need on a daily basis, not just when they go on a 10-mile bike ride versus just going down the street to Love's or next door to Grandma's or anything like that. The safety precautions that they need to use, and wearing helmets, right and left turn signals, stop signals for the people behind them, on the side of them, and in front of them, so that they know that the surrounding around them is completely safe. We had four classes this year, and about 20 to 25 students in each class. And with that, I had presented them with an award for participating and finishing the class. The presentation that I had with them, we went through a really cool, we went through a really cool, going through the cones and stuff. They rode some bikes, and they showed me that they knew how to use the stop signs and the right and left turns and stuff. They did that very well. And on top of that, I asked them if they would be willing to participate in a coloring contest, and we got a really good turnout with that. Like I said, we had four classes, so I had four packages to hand out, and I just randomly handed them out to one of my sergeants and a fellow officer. I handed them, I think, one to you, and then my chief. So with that, they really selected one winner out of each class. And with that, I had talked to chief, and we asked if we can do something kind of special for them, because they participated in this. So, this year, we tried to do a little differently, and we got them some pretty cool, a pretty good, cool prize. Our first one is for Ms. Lopez's class. Her name is Brianna Kaufman Brigham, and she wasn't able to show up tonight with us. She showed up two days ago and claimed her prize. We had also given them their picture, and that's what we'll do today. I'll give you your guys' picture back, and then you guys can pose for a nice little picture real quick, and then have a good evening and the rest of that, okay? But with that, I'll go ahead and call the next class. This is Mrs. Casillas's kindergarten class, and the winner is, out of that was Jelani Krill. And if you're here, come on up, please. And what we're gonna give you is a movie ticket to the movies, okay? And I understand that you're tiny, so you can't really go by yourself, so we're gonna give you a movie ticket also for a parent. Okay? So you got a parent ticket and for you, okay? Is that for you? The next class we'll do is Ms. Angela's, and that's, the winner out of that class was Maddox Resendez. And the same thing for you, okay? You colored really well. We give you a ticket for your brother, or for you, and then either for a brother or a parent, okay? Sound good? Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for participating. Our last class is Ms. Lorenz's kindergarten class. And we had a winner, Davian, out of that class. And this is for you, sir. Also, a movie ticket for you and for a family member, okay? Thank you guys very much.
Officer Pino, would you like to come up with us and all of the kids that got awards? You guys wanna come back up? We'll do one big photo with everybody. I just don't have to go to the children's people. Congratulations. Congratulations. Oh, wow. Those are good. Very good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. So now is the time in our reading when we have any unscheduled citizens comments. If you would like to come forward to the podium, state your name for the record, and just please keep in mind, we can't make any formal actions this evening on a citizens comment. Gary?
Yeah, Gary Johnson, with Neighborhood Watch, and I wanna present something we can, it's coming up for July 4th, but I wanted the council to be aware of it, and also wanted to get some help with an official ruling, which we can talk about next time if you can go through some of this. But before I do that, I want to thank Rob Vance for working out some details on the KidVenture that's coming up, which Randy will talk to you about in a little bit. But got things worked out. We made a deal, and it was, it worked out well, so I appreciate that. The thing coming up in July 4th is just something so we don't have to drive to Creed to celebrate the 4th of July. And it's not a huge deal, but it's, Neighborhood Watch is sponsoring or putting it on with a community picnic, kind of like a potluck, but Neighborhood Watch is providing most of the hot dogs, burgers, condiments, sodas, that kind of thing. And we wanna put on, if we can get, some folks in town to participate, a slow pitch softball game with the under-30s folks against the over-30s folks. So, we're just looking to, in order for any of that to work, it's just gonna take some participation and some exposure. And we'll be working on that, but I wanted to get the city involved and get your okay on the thing and support, as well as the possibility between y'all and the police department and whatever we have to go through to get some kind of fireworks involved. I don't know everything that's involved with that, but I wanna get that out there, and so we can talk about it, hopefully have something done for the 4th of July. So, I got you the basic information about that, but I'll be, we'll talk some more about that, and we'll be back next week, and hopefully we can get some kind of determination on what can and can't be done. So, hopefully, we can get a good turnout and have a good time, and we won't have to drive to the next county to celebrate the 4th of July.
I do have one question. You're talking like a regulation-sized softball. Is what you're planning to use to play softball?
No. It's the Chicago-sized 16-inch. It's a, if you're not familiar with that, it's just, it's more commonly known as mushball.
Okay. Now I know what you're talking about.
It's a whole lot less involved than softball, because the ball's not gonna go as far. You don't use gloves, or you don't even, in fact, they're restricted, you know, when you're doing this, you can't. And the bases are a little shorter, and, you know, I'm thinking of the young kids. Right? Who wanna keep the whole process down and simple, and just for the fun of it, basically. So, anyhow, we'll have some more information about that, but hopefully that'll work out, and the fireworks thing, I know, is probably some kind of issue, but hopefully we can get something worked out there, too.
Well, I can tell you from experience doing the holiday festival fireworks, and I don't mean to be the negative Nancy in the room here, but you pretty much have to start with the fire chief at least three months in advance.
Oh, great, okay.
To get, you have to submit the list of fireworks you're gonna shoot, what's their range, and they have to go out and survey it, clear it. You have to get a pyrotechnician whose license, they have to provide their insurance. And I know we're pretty limited on pyrotechnicians in the valley, and most of them are already scheduled for Creed.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm not sure if you've checked out the full-blown fireworks display cost.
Absolutely not. Just wanna get this going, but I appreciate your input, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars.
Interesting. Well, maybe something on a little lower scale, but we've got the fire department chaplain here, and maybe he knows how to figure something out, work some kind of spiritual miracle there.
The only thing, you need to find someplace here like they do, that stampede after the concert. It's out in the field, and it's not over on top of a building or anything. It's on the ground, and it's shot up there. But whoever is doing it has to be bonded, licensed, and everything. So there, because of the things entered to the structures or anything, you can't have it, you can't have it around a lot of structures where there's a chance of catching fire, and you can't have it on a building in town, because if one of these buildings gets on fire, you're gonna take the whole block.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that. We don't, we don't want any...
So if you can, yeah, find an open space, a park or something that, where you have some trees, we have fire trucks there in case something goes out. But it has to be an open area, and preferably shot off the ground.
All right. So we have some challenges with the fireworks.
You know, maybe some stuff you can look into until the next meeting.
Yeah.
If you can find a licensed pyrotechnician that's available, and get some costs from them, what they would charge, and bring that to the next meeting, that would be...
Okay. We'll do that. I knew that was gonna be a little bit of challenge. If we can't, we can't, but it's, would be, would be nice, even if there's some low-key alternative to that. Seems like I've heard of that, where it's not the full-blown deal, where it just kind of, but if not, then that's fine. I know we can, I know we can pull off the picnic and the ballgame, so we'll work on the rest of it.
Okay.
Any other? All right, thanks.
Good evening, council and gallery staff and everybody. I'm Randy Brown, and I'm just here to talk to you briefly, just informationally, about KidVenture. Last year, we had our inaugural KidVenture, and it was held at the Nazarene Church. And, you know, with the idea of San Luis Valley economic development that you mentioned, this is kind of a San Luis Valley children's development. We had kids come in from Alamosa, from Del Norte, and trying to get some in from Center. We had 347 children come through last year, which was really cool, ages five to 11. And every kid that came and came to the closing night got a drawstring bag, they don't call them backpacks, it's a drawstring bag, filled with school supplies. So it was really a cool thing. The last night, we had, we used Chapman Park, and we set up one of those big blow-up screens and watched Zootopia, and gave all the families a free meal, be it it wasn't a great meal, hot dogs and chips and soda and whatever. But, but that's what we did last year, and we're gonna do it again this year. I wanted to just thank you for the city's participation with this. Last year, law enforcement's presence was just huge. Not that we needed any help that way, but it's nice for children and families to be around law enforcement and not feel threatened, but actually make relationship a little bit with them, and that part was exciting to me. So Gary mentioned the bus, and the city has graciously made arrangements for us to use the bus. You will hold Kerry hostage for two or three trips after that, and he'll be driving the bus for other events. That was the deal we made. We kinda wanted to see maybe five or 10 events, but two or three's great.
I agree.
You're welcome. And I'll check later to see if the gazebo is open at Chapman Park for those dates. It'll be July 11th through 13th. And that's, that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate it, and appreciate the city government. All you have to do, having been commissioner, I understand that it can be challenging, especially with the financial part, and the opinions of community about who you are and what you do. So I want you to know, I appreciate you. I would take a minute just to ask you, I know that there's several that would like to participate with helping the city in different areas, be it cleanup or whatever. And I don't know, maybe I can speak to some of you later, and you can give me some ideas or where the city needs help, and participate in that way, just to help facilitate a change in that relationship, so. Any questions about KidVenture, or good? Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Have a great night.
You, too. Is there anyone else this evening that'd like to... Moving on to ordinances, we have our second and final reading on ordinance number 880, an ordinance repealing and replacing municipal code section 5-1-300 on drug houses and illegal activity. Which is the council?
I move to approve ordinance number 880, ordinance repealing and replacing municipal code section 5-1-300, drug houses and illegal activity, on second and final reading.
Second. Any other discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Schrader?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports, we have the sitting atmosphere.
You guys have my written report, so I'll just touch on a few things on that. City's still continuing with some staffing issues. I kinda outlined what was going on with the different departments. We have some interviews coming up this week to hopefully fill some of those positions. We still gotta have some more, so continuing to struggle with the staffing issue. Planning and zoning, we did meet last night. We had two of the three members in attendance. We're gonna, one of the decisions that was made last night's meeting was to move up the P and Z to a meeting every two weeks, so we can try to get that draft ordinance completed. And so, we're working diligently on that. Just to the public that's listening and watching this on YouTube, if you have a desire to serve the city, the city's in dire needs across all of our boards and commissions for seats. If it's something you'd like to participate in, please get ahold of the city clerk. All we need at this point is just a letter of interest, and then she can get with you as far as some details and some of your background, and present it to council and start filling some of these boards. It's a good way to serve your community. The community block grant, we got notice from the state that they have all the paperwork now that's needed, and they're in the process of doing their process to get it signed, which is good news. So we should have something back within probably the next week, and then we'll be able to move forward with that. So, we're gonna go ahead, and I think Karen's gonna start doing some of the title work or ordering the title work going, so we can at least get started on the something and start moving forward. Last council meeting, Jim Clare presented the idea of creating some banner stations on either end of town. Kinda had the nods that it was in your guys', you guys were favorable to it. So if that is the case, if I could have a formal motion tonight to move forward with that project, that would be really good. So...
Do you have a location in mind?
We're looking at Chapman Park for the west side. Jim and I are gonna meet tomorrow morning and go to the east side and see what location would be ideal. Currently, banners are being used at Marsh Park, and there is space there to do that station, but we're gonna see if maybe we can expand that out a little further east to capture people as they come into town. So, so we're thinking Marsh Park is one of our properties that would be a good location off of seed pods right away, possibly down there at the triangle going on Sherman.
Okay.
So, those are the locations we're gonna look at tomorrow, to kinda determine what's gonna be the best for us. Okay?
I make a motion to authorize Rob to work with Jim Clare to determine the two locations for posting banners for community events.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to remind council that this month's work session will cover the city's budget. I just need a couple of questions answered. Would you like all of the department heads at that meeting, or do you think just Heather and myself can handle that with council?
For starting with, probably just Heather and yourself would be...
That's kinda what I was thinking. So, okay. The reminder, the work session is scheduled for June 13th at 6:00 PM, so might be a fairly long one, so. And then the last thing, I just wanted to remind council that both Nita and myself will not be at the council meeting on June 15th. We both have people that are sitting in, and they will sit in for us during that meeting. So, I'm gonna try to keep that agenda fairly light. One of the items that'll be on the agenda is a presentation by Oak Leaf Energy Partnership. They're constructing a solar array in the valley, and they've asked if we would like to partner with them, so they're gonna present to council. And it's an opportunity for us to buy energy at a reduced rate as part of their solar array, and reduce some of our operating costs as far as our Excel energy bills. So, Excel provides rebates, and we would be able to capitalize on some of those rebates, somewhere between 4% and 10%. So, it's some money. So, like I said, they'll present to you. By the time that presentation takes place, we'll have an idea of what we're looking at as far as savings and that. And I did forward a boilerplate contract over to Karen for her to review. Staff's been working to get all of, two years' worth of Excel bills, so they have a pretty good idea of what our savings will look like over the next. You buy for 20 years, and it kinda pays out. Starts off small, and as the years go on, you see bigger savings. So, and with that, that's pretty much it. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just wanted to clarify the date of the work session. You're saying the 13th is when the work session is?
Yes.
Oh, that's what we need to clarify, too. The breakfast meeting that we had scheduled with the school board, you have it the 6th, I believe that we have it on the first Wednesday.
I think it's the 7th.
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 Yes.
It's the city...
It's the city school that Matt and I sit on.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I'm sorry. I will make that change.
Just making sure we're all.
No, I'm sorry.
I just asked Matt, I said, did they change?
No, no, nobody changed. It just, my calendar's been doing some weird things, so. Okay, yes, it is the first Wednesday, on the 7th, June 7th. We will make that change to the event calendar. Okay?
I will not be at the workshop.
Okay, that's fine.
I'd like to be. You know where I'll be.
Right. And Heather's going to get stuff out to everybody on Monday, so everybody will have a chance to review and if you want to, I'm more than willing to take your comments and, and bring them to the work session. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. City attorney's report.
Rob pretty much kind of detailed what I've looked at with him, so I'm not going to repeat that. You got all the information. The only other thing that I'm looking into is, and I've got a, an email into Judge Powell, who I understand is, well, he's out of the office, so until June 5th, maybe on vacation, is in our penalty ordinance, is, is adding a restitution provision. And I want to get his input on that, but that's something I'm going to be working on the next couple of weeks if it works, unless that's in his inherent, excuse me, inherent authority already. So, that's, that's where I'm at and we've got a, got a meeting with the PD set up next Wednesday at 1:00. And we'll have planning and zoning and be able to continue to expand on that draft ordinance. Up until now, I haven't had any feedback from, from the, the board, so just keep working on that one as well. Any questions?
Are you doing anything with Don Shank?
I don't know who Don Shank is.
The railroad, supposed railroad and all the cars over there off of 285.
Not as of now, no. I'm not sure where that's at.
Well, we, we, the city has been trying to pursue getting him to get the rest of that lot cleaned off.
Okay.
And it's been in progress since before I came on council, which is over six years ago.
So what I need to do is get the file and I will do that forthwith. I understand that, that Forrest is going to be coming back, so perhaps I can now kind of liaise with him. He can give me some background, some directions. So I'm, I've got some targeted files to look at in the files that were from previous council, but thank you for, for letting me know that. I'll follow up on it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Kids Connection report. Hello. So, Kids Connection is moving forward. We just started our first week of summer, so it's been very busy. I was trying not to fall asleep back there, I apologize. It's been a really long day. With that, we did summer staff training last week and got three new staff members that began with Kids Connection. So far, they haven't ran out of the building any three of these days, so I think they're going to last to the end of the summer. We also have two additional high school staff members that came from the Montavista School District in coordination with their EARS grant that they use for their mentoring program. We interviewed them on Tuesday. They got all of their paperwork in yesterday and they both started with us today. And they were both really enthusiastic about coming back tomorrow, so hopefully our kids don't run them off. They'll be with us until July 26th and they're paid through the school district to work at Kids Connection until July 26th. I also have one more high school staff member that will be starting shortly. We'll have her approximately 17 hours a week and she is being provided through Rio Grande Prevention Partners and the Rio Grande County Health to do some mentoring and some prevention work with our youth during the week. So, you should see, hopefully, some cool things coming into the community. They, they're going to work on a big prevention project that they are trying to accomplish or get started and passed out into the school district by the beginning of the school year with her help. So hopefully that takes off. Let's see. Our first field trips will begin next week. We're going to the sand dunes on Thursday and then the next six Fridays, we will be going to an outdoor classroom with the backyard to back, backyard to back country program that's provided through the AmeriCorps volunteers. They have scheduled the entire outside curriculum. They want our kids from nine o'clock until four o'clock each of those Fridays. They're starting with the five to seven-year-olds and then they will do the eight to 10-year-olds on alternating weeks. And that'll probably teach them some more kind of outdoor geared curriculum, teach them how to survive in wilderness, how we should be taking care of our outdoors. So, I'm excited to see what they bring back from that. If any of you have been down on Washington Street, you'll notice the empty lot that's two buildings down from us. In between where Callie Weider has her little building, there's a vacant lot and then our neighbors and Kids Connection. Callie has agreed to let Kids Connection clear out the front 20 feet of the area and begin an art garden. So we have some flowers that have actually been planted. We'll see if they actually grow. We had some that were planted about three weeks ago. They're taking off pretty good, but their kids are working on planters. We hope to get some old, some of our old tires and our old equipment painted and get into that area, so we have some really unique pieces of art, hopefully working out as well as our imagination thinks they should. And it's not just going to be like art projects threw up on the grass, hopefully at least. Their plans are for a frog made out of tires. I just hope that they understand how much work it's going to be. So, keep your eyes out for that. I've talked with Chelsea, I caught her walking by. Did she sneak out already? I caught her sneaking by, I see her walk by, it gets mail every day, so I told her, as you're walking by, keep your eye out. So she's taking progress pictures for us, so she can have a beginning all the way through to whatever it ends up being. And then, that's mainly how our summer is going. I am working with the KidVenture crew as well and we will be providing lunch and a snack for 400 kids each day for those four days, like we did last year with the partnership through Care and Share, free of charge to them, free of charge to us, just a lot more food to have to serve. But we're willing to do it because they brought a, a good group of kids out of it. So, other than that, I can't think of anything else. I was making a note back there because I have not had time to prepare, so if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer those.
Sounds great.
It's very busy.
I appreciate and am jealous of your talents and your energy, Rob.
Honestly, you just have to do what the kids like to do and it all comes very easy. You'll notice our new staff shirts. I have a, I have a Captain America one today. We have a Superman one that most of the staff wore yesterday and as we were walking back from the park, we had an older gentleman stop us with a group of kids and he was like, how come all the big people are wear, are dressed like Superman? He just didn't understand what was going on. But you'll see our Incredible Hulk shirts also. We went with the Superman theme this year, so they're our favorite shirts of all. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like.
Amy's on vacation, so there will not be a referee for tonight.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Or the council.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I guess council might want to report. Jason, to cover.
I'll just kind of reiterate a little bit about the planning and zoning meeting. So, we, we did get a quorum last night. We started going over the draft ordinance that Karen had, had already given to them. There's a couple more additions that they wanted to add. They have agreed to be two, they're willing to meet every two weeks until they get the ordinance done. They, they realize the importance of that and wanting to get that done and making sure that everything's covered, there's no loopholes and that there, there's protections put in place for the city. So they're, they're willing to meet every two weeks for that. The next meeting's going to be June 8th at 6:00 PM here, so we're, if you're interested and willing to come in and, and hear the discussion about what's going on, I think that what they're going to do is debate, they're going into each section specifically, that way each section of that is, is covered in depth at each of those meetings and once that's done, then they'll move on to the next section, so that, that way, everything's covered. That's it.
Thank you.
So, doing another coffee with council. That's going to be June 7th at 6:00 PM. And we're just going to be meeting over at Java Dave's again. Anybody who wants to show up, ask questions, find out in a more informal setting, things that are going on and see if we can't work together to bring up some new ideas and new, new avenues to, to work towards building a better city. Kind of what we're doing, all yeah.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that Dirk Drags are this weekend, Friday, Saturday. Are they out there Sunday mornings? I think for a little while, Sunday morning. So, out of the movie manner, go check it out if you haven't been. It's really, really cool. So. Does we have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session for discussion of personnel matters under CRS section 24-6-402, 2F, and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of this matter in open session. Any matter of this body, any member of this body, any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters, personal to particular employees.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Councilor Schrader?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Schlewa?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, thank you. So we'll take a short little recess and we'll come back and.